I'd like to call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Voting Meeting today, Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, location, to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Roll call.
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Casal Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vardeman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
Here.
We'll stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of Georgia stands one nation, under God, in the hands of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had seven communications last month, two regarding the law enforcement resolution, cellphone use, or cellphone policy rather, and survey data. I'd like to move for the following minutes to be approved, the Hybrid Voting Budget Adoption Meeting and Executive Session for April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. I move to adopt this, approve those minutes. Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Ms. Casal Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Yes.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman.
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees.
Yes. We'll move on to our student representative reports.
Okay, so we're gonna start with Irving, as usual. Irving had a wonderful week celebrating their teachers and staff for Teacher Appreciation Week. They want to say thank you to the participating local businesses for their generosity in raffles, and to the Irving families for stocking the faculty lounge. It was a great week. They also look forward to the art show coming up on Wednesday, May twenty-second, and their whole school picnic on Friday, May thirty-first. The final Coffee with the Principal for the school year will be held tomorrow, May fourteenth, at eight fifteen a.m. in Irving's Media Center. If any of the Irving parents would like to join Ms. McNally to talk over a cup of joe, now is the time.
Over at Bartle, their pajama reading night will be on May sixteenth at five thirty p.m. in the Bartle Library. They encourage students to cozy up in their pajamas and have some reading fun. The fifth grade, fifth grade annual trip to Camp Burnie will be on May twentieth to May twenty-second, and the second grade field trip will be to the Liberty Science Museum on May twenty-third. Lastly, their Bartles Steam Night will be on May twenty-ninth from five to seven p.m.
Okay, middle school. The seventh grade had a great time at their field trip to the Sterling Hill Mining Museum on April twenty-fourth, just a little while ago. The middle school also congratulates their students, Angela Shaw, Samia Javed, Nahal Javed, and Alyssa Recto, who were recognized at the Student Spotlight. Middle school also had an awesome spirit week plus a pep rally to get excited for the NJSLA. They hope for their scores to be out of this world. Monday was Dress Like an Alien Day, Tuesday was May the Force Be With You, Star Wars Day. Wednesday was Wear Pajama Day because it's cold in space. And Thursday was Dress Like a Star, which, you know, favorite celebrity. And Wednesday was Wear Your Favorite Class, not Favorite Class, Wear Your Class Color Day for the pep rally, so not space themed, but that's okay. As mentioned before, the English Language Arts NJSLA testing was last week. This week is all math testing and science is next week. Oh, boy. The middle school asks their parents to be sure their children get a good night's sleep and have a hearty breakfast during testing. Finally, Diversity Day will be held May thirtieth. The students will get to experience a full day of workshops and two keynote speakers, which is super cool.
So over at the high school, we had two assemblies that were held in mid-April featuring Holocaust survivors sharing their stories. Freshmen and sophomores heard from Henry and Bernard, I'm sorry, Schanger, twin brothers who were hidden in southern France as young children. Juniors and seniors heard from Tova Friedman, New York Times bestselling author of The Daughter of Auschwitz, and TikTok user with over five hundred thousand followers. She was liberated from Auschwitz at age six and is one of the youngest living survivors. The speakers came as part of a new multi-year public art component of Ceramics Two, where we will host local voices and explore important events and lessons from history. The stories shared in April are serving as the basis for a collaborative outdoor clay piece by our two ceramic classes, Memorizing the Holocaust. The art installation is anticipated to be completed and installed on HPHS grounds in mid to late June, and community members are encouraged to view the piece and explore the related website that is in development, also slated to go live in mid to late June. The Drama Club will have their last performance of the year, One Night, One Acts, which is a production of eleven, which is the production of a string of eleven ten-minute act show, one-act shows, sorry, can't speak today. They're fully student-written, produced, and performed. The show will be on May nineteenth at three p.m., and tickets can be purchased at HPdrama.net. So on to some achievements. We would like to congratulate a few of our senior class owls on some special achievements. They were, three of them were awarded the GMC Sportmanship Award that recognizes student athletes who have distinguished themselves through demonstrated acts of sportmanship and ethical behavior. The seniors were Kier Marsh, Nick Marino, and Enin Chu. We'd also like to congratulate Kai Stevens, who was chosen as the Highland Park High School recipient of the Middlesex County Principals Association Award. He was picked for his outstanding student academic and extracurricular achievements. Furthermore, Enin was honored at the same luncheon with a special recognition called the Kindness Council Award, where she was granted five hundred dollars to donate in her name to a charity of her choice that assists Middlesex County children in need. She chose to benefit the Highland Park Buddy Ball Program that teaches sports to children with special needs from Highland Park and neighboring communities. Thank you, Enin. Your kindness was very inspiring, and more info on these awards can be found on the Highland Park High School's website. The guidance department would like to remind all seniors to fill out their final transcript form, and it could be found in the guidance office and handed to Ms. Dewhurst. And Roy, do you want to share that last one?
Oh, sure. The Highland Park High School Choir went on their overnight trip to the World Strides Music Festival in Boston, Massachusetts, and brought home the gold. Both the symphonic choir and the chamber choir achieved a gold ranking in their divisions, with chamber choir additionally winning first place. Congratulations to Mrs. Hodge and the entire choir for their accomplishments.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, Roy and Andrew. Are there any questions or comments for our student representatives?
Just to thank you both, I mean, it's just great to hear all the good things that are going on, and the detail that you're giving us, really, I really appreciate it. It's a fun way to get that word out to the community about all that, the good stuff that's happening in our schools.
Yeah, I would just echo that really outstanding reporting this entire year, and it's enthusiastic every single time. We appreciate it. We want you to know that you are really appreciating all the hours you put into this.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Hello? No, 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 no. I got one, okay.
Wait, I'm gonna need that fixed for the presentation. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to echo everyone's sentiments and thank Roy and Andrew for their amazing presentation tonight and throughout the course of the year. Also, I wanted to add that, to echo what at least I know Andrew said about the high school website. So if you go to each of the school's websites, you'll see all these accolades and accomplishments. I know for, just for example, the high school does a wonderful job. Mr. Lassiter posts all of the pictures and recognitions to promote all the great things the students are doing. So continue to check your school's website in the news feed. There's a lot of great things happening. So speaking of great things happening, I'm very excited to highlight two more high school programs tonight. I had the great opportunity of watching a DECA presentation before they left for their amazing trip to Anaheim. And if that presentation was a glimpse of of anything remarkable that was gonna be happening, then the whole team, I know, was gonna find great success because it was an amazing presentation. So for tonight, I'd like to start by inviting Ms. Chirco, Krista Chirco, up to the podium with some well-deserving students. They're gonna talk about DECA and a little bit about their most recent trip to Anaheim. So the advisor of the program, Ms. Chirco, would you, oh, like, well, you can come up to the podium if that works, or you can stand with the mic there, doesn't matter. Okay, yep.
It's a lot of pressure to figure out which way. All right. Make more sense. You too. Told you you were talking. We went fancy with our blazers today. So we are from Highland Park DECA. As Dr. Suska said, I am Krista Chirco. I am the advisor.
I'm Rebecca Yu.
I'm Tom Carmen.
I'm Hannah Popoff, the assistant advisor.
I'm Andrew Dalton.
I'm London Atkins.
So DECA is a business club at the high school, and I'm sure if you ask any of them what DECA actually is, they're kind of gonna look at you really confused and then just kind of say it's a community. It is a family. It is a bunch of students who come together to complete various projects as well as learn fundamental business skills. So we have eighty-seven members in the club, and we are hoping to gain more within the next year. Anyone looking to join, it is early registration, and you can do that. So for DECA, they have three main competitive events. The first one is a role play, which is mandatory for all DECA members. This is kind of like an interview where they get a different scenario, and they have to come up with a answer to the scenario. So it could be something like the price of groceries are going up, or you have to market a new product in a different way. So students will get the prompt. They'll have ten minutes to kind of come up with an answer before meeting with the judge, and they go through the prompt with the judge. The judge has some questions for them, and then they kind of thank them and hope that they qualify to the next round. The next one is virtual business. So virtual business is an online simulated business that you, in a sense, play for two weeks. If you have the highest profit in the region after those two weeks, then you are able to automatically qualify to the International Career and Development Conference. And then our final one, which is our most popular one, is our manuals. So these are some of our bigger projects where we are running our school store, we are raising money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, we are working with Senior Connection, and just trying to do things in the community that really benefit others. So it goes through the project management process where students have to identify their human resources, their budget, and a bunch of different things in order to complete a successful project. Then they write twenty pages about it and complete a fifteen-minute presentation in front of the judge at their first competition at states. And it is pretty cool what they can accomplish. So I'm gonna give it over to Becky, and she's gonna talk more about the competitions.
Okay, so throughout our school year, we have four main competitions. The first one is testing, which is held in our media center during the school day, and it's a rigorous one-hundred-question multiple-choice test that centers around the basics of marketing or finance and just like business principles. And the score you get ties into the role play that Ms. Chirco mentioned before, which is competed at districts. So districts is divided into two sections, usually half of New Jersey, and then the other half goes another day. And this is held at Kane University. This is when the role plays go. And these role plays are challenging because individuals are given ten minutes to think of a solution of a problem. And this requires students to think on their feet before attending an interactive session with a judge. And then the third big competition is held at Harrah's in Atlantic City, and it is states. And only students who qualify for states can attend, so you either have to qualify through role play at districts, or you are in a manual, and this is when you present your manual in front of a judge, or you go through a session of role play. The fourth main event is ICDC, which was held in California this year. And this is an international competition, so there are students from all around the world, from all different cultures. And we competed against twenty-three thousand other DECA members from around the world. So, and it's a great way to network, meet other people from other countries and other schools and other states, and it's really just a great experience. So this is, so, these are some pictures from districts, and in the top left, there's DECA Jeff and me and Andrew. And it's really just, again, a great way to network with people from New Jersey. And it's a great experience because it requires you to really like think on your feet and put yourself in a situation. And, yeah, and we had a lot of qualifiers this year, so only top ten qualify for states, and these are just, yeah.
So these are all of our qualifiers, which qualified to states, which Becky explained a little bit about, held in Atlantic City. There, as you can see, I know Ms. Chirco was talking a lot about the, almost the diversity of events that you can do and make it very individualized to the community, the school community, and so forth. And we had a lot of placements. What's really awesome about these placements is the students work really, really hard to get there. They practice with us. They practice with each other. They practice individually. Many, many a lunch. We spend, they practice you. And so it's really impressive that we had so many qualifiers this year. Really impressive.
So we actually brought fifty of the eighty-seven students to states with us, and as you could see, there's a bunch of different pictures of them getting awards, being on stage, and a lot of the fun things that were happening.
And here's more. That wasn't enough. And the groups that you see at the bottom, where you see Matt, Tom, and Andrew kind of have, are the first names of the three groups at the bottom. Those are manual groups. Those are twenty-page, correct? Twenty-page manual groups. They wrote the twenty-page papers essentially, and did these projects all year long, which they presented on. Very, very impressive. Our girl London over here, she is a qualifier for Supermarket Careers. It's a program that a lot of our GLOW students go into for career and community studies. Fantastic. We're proud of you, London. Very hard to do. We have Joe Angel's group there. That is a ten-pager. So they wrote a ten-page manual, and they did project over a thirty-day period. And I know you're gonna hear about the rest from Andrew, so I don't really want to give it away.
Okay, so manuals are twenty-page papers, and we present them to a judge for fifteen minutes at states. And we had around eleven manuals this year, and they were in groups of two or three, and it's very challenging because you have to write twenty pages on a business solution or something that you did. And you go against twenty or thirty other groups at states.
So this year, we had a group that developed their, an idea for a new app called Spot a Friend. We had Emma, Delia, and Ethan work to raise awareness for a program in town called Senior Connection that works to kind of be friends with seniors and play different games and such. We had Evelyn, Theo, and Akib work to have a bracelet business with some of the GLOW students. We had Serena, Sam, and Victoria, who were working to find ways to better hire or keep employees for American towing. We had two groups work with Alenicon in town to kind of bring more awareness and customers to their business. We had the Sales Project Group that was marketing the school store and kind of running and operating it. And then we also had Topo, Jason, and Isaiah write a paper about what they do at Cup of Glow.
So the SPE is a school-based enterprise, and it's located right across our gym. And what it is, it sells snacks for one dollar, and it's completely student-run, so whenever students have a free period, such as study hall, they go down to the store. And students are, students can go to the store to purchase snacks with a pass. And we have snacks such as chips, goldfish, granola bars, and we also have Arizona, which is our most popular item, definitely. And we also sell apparel, if you guys are interested. So there's the hoodies, and we also have pants, and it's very popular at our school.
This year, we were able to certify our school store at the highest level, which is the gold level in both food and retail.
All right, so my project with my two team members, Andrea and Megan, was community giving. We raised a total of ten thousand dollars to the Make-A-Wish Foundation. As you can see here, we went to the president's reception. Because we raised so much, we, we met a lot of the Make-A-Wish kids, and we just talked to a lot of people. We also got an additional four thousand dollars at the president's reception. Up in the top left, you can see our carnival that we did, where we raised about three thousand dollars, right? We had a carnival. We had about two hundred kids come out to the turf. It was held during the last cheer of the day, and we had it go until, I think, four or five, with a lot of community members also came out. We also got interviewed by, what, News Twelve, right? So that was great. We then held another fundraiser where we raised. The Macy's Believe Campaign is a campaign that raises money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and every letter that you write for the Macy's Believe Campaign is a dollar donated, right? So the Make-A-Wish Foundation. However, the Macy's Believe Campaign did not happen this year, right? We were still able to get the money through the president's reception and other great donors. We were able to write five thousand eighty-four letters, right? So that was a big contribution to all the money that we raised. And then we got some extra donations through people and small businesses and friends and family, right? So it was a great year this year. We raised a lot of money, and we made it. We got sixth place at states, and we made it to nationals, right? Sadly, we didn't win, but hopefully we'll get it next year.
Okay, and then for my manual group this year, my members were Becky and Henry. We had financial literacy, so we took on a task of teaching students different financial literacy topics. So we taught students within the GLOW program different topics such as banking, savings, and investing, in which for, I personally taught the banking lesson, in which I taught students the importance of debit cards and banks. And we kind of gave them different situations in which they would use these different tools, but also gave them different lessons on how like, on why it was important to save, and also basic topics of investing. So it was definitely a very fun experience, not just for the kids, but also for us. There was definitely a lot of different skills involved for us. We got a little glimpse at teaching. Don't know how you guys do it. But we also were able to teach the students in the GLOW program different, all these different skills and things like that.
Tom has volunteered to sing it. Did she really, really?
I don't think I would have said that.
You know, yeah. So these were all the students that we brought with us to Anaheim, California. They had various events to compete in, so Becky and Andrew competed their manual on financial literacy. Tom was doing his manual on community giving. We had representatives for the School-Based Enterprise Competition. And then we had some students who went to an academy to kind of learn how to better our DECA chapter and kind of just improve everything that we were doing. So London actually went to the class. Which class did you go to?
Inspiring.
So she went to the Inspire class, and what'd you learn there?
I don't know.
You don't know? So Inspire is a class that kind of gets you prepared for the future. So there was a lot of students from different districts and different states who were learning how to write a resume or how to network a little bit better, and different guest speakers who can kind of help with improving all of those skills. In addition to some of these business skills, they do learn some travel training. We had some students who've never been on an airplane before. So it was kind of cool to see them, you know, navigate through security and kind of all the like traffic and losing IDs and all the fun stuff that happened. So we also were able to have a mentorship with AT&amp;T this year. So they hosted us for kind of like an awards dinner-ish kind of thing, where we got to meet some of the AT&amp;T mentors who are working in the industry, who partner up with the students to kind of help them get started and improve their future goals and make it easier for them. We are also really close to Disneyland, so we were able to go there, and Tom really enjoyed Cars Land. And then we are also able to take them to Huntington Beach, and that is some of the pictures that you see there. We're all kind of jumping. We're doing some handstands. Do you guys have anything to add about ICDC?
So I definitely wanted to emphasize the fact that for some of us, this was our first time on airplanes, but also as well as across the country or in a different state. Because as well of all the business and academic skills that come along with DECA, there are a lot of experiential like learning skills that come along with this as well. For a lot of the students on this trip, it was definitely first time like traveling and stuff like that. But it was also fun to be able to like learn how to like navigate theme parks and also like different like city stuff, and kind of like definitely get a glimpse of what it is to be more independent.
Oh, sure. So there, an hour before the opening ceremony, there's always a pin trade, right? Every student is given six pins, which is each state, right, has a specific pin, right? So ours was like a little monopoly man this year. And it's really a prime time to network with so many people, right? There's people from all around the United States, and then even people in Spain, Guam, China, right? A lot of people from Canada. It's really a great time. I think that's probably one of my favorite times at ICDC, right? Just because I like to talk to so many people and meet so many different new faces, right? So it's honestly great. We had a great, like, we had it outdoors this time. I'm not gonna lie, I did kind of go overtime, just a little bit, just having a little too much fun. I was featured in the DECA reel, right, on Instagram? Yeah. I was like the pin man. I had it all on my like blazer. It was great. They were like, oh, what can we trade? And I'd just be like, look at my blazer. And they'd be like, this one. And I'd be like, what do you have, you know? It was great. I loved it, right? So I mean, I really have a great time there. I know we went on a whole chapter run one day. That was really fun, right? We go on chapter dinners. We do a lot of things with our chapter, and it really, you feel like you get like really like close with that group. So it's a really fun time. It's just, it's really amazing. There were like a lot of times where like, you, I mean, you were never alone, right? You'd always have someone. You'd always have someone and you'd always meet new people. So right, everybody in our hotel was from New Jersey. So like, you kind of knew them from states, right? And it was just, it was a great time, right?
All right. So that is kind of our little bit about DECA. It definitely goes way deeper, but we don't want to take up any more time because we have to get back to the Wizards. Um, so thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to share what we do with you all.
Thank you, Ms. Chirco, Ms. Pavlock and students. And of course, feel free to go back to, uh, the Wizards game or what other fun activities you were doing. I hear it's packed for the Wizards game, so that's very exciting. Uh, next I would like to welcome Mr. Mike McCray up. Oh, we're just transitioning between our slides. Just give us one minute.
Hello.
So Mr. McCray is going to share with us a little bit of, about our National Honor Society and the amazing work that they do.
It is totally not fair to have to follow that presentation. I just want to say.
Are you trading pins? Are you, you know, chapter dinners?
Grab some Cinnabuns on your way out.
Okay. My name is Mike McCray and I am the NHS supervisor. Um, so National Honor Society is a club we have here at Highland Park High School. Um, I'll tell you through what the purpose of NHS is, is to create enthusiasm for scholarship, stimulate a desire to render service, to promote worthy leadership and to encourage the development of character in students, uh, here in Highland Park High School. Um, so we have four different pillars that kind of guide what NHS stands for. And all of the NHS students have requirements they have to achieve under each one of those pillars. So for example, for scholarship, one of the pillars, uh, they need to maintain a GPA of 3.5 and above. They also have to provide tutoring services, of which they did a lot of this school year. Um, they need to complete at least 20 hours of service during the school year. Um, students are really given the option to complete that service with any charities that they want. Um, sometimes I will give them resources that they can reach out to. Sometimes they network with each other. Um, some of them already have service projects that they do, such as buddy ball, that they just kind of, um, integrate into their hours for the club. Um, the next pillar is character, uh, which is they have to model exemplary educational and personal integrity. Um, this is basically, they're not supposed to get written up for anything. They're supposed to be a model student, both in and out of the classroom. Um, again, it goes back to, it's not just about having a high GPA. You need to have a high character as well. Um, leadership, they have to demonstrate two examples, uh, during the school year. Again, this takes a variety of forms. Students have a lot of flexibility as far as how they can achieve this particular pillar. Uh, it could be they're a captain of a team. They are, um, the leader of an after-school fundraising program. It can even be something that they do in their church. Um, there's really a lot of different examples of leadership that a student can exhibit. Um, so I included a few examples of service. Um, you'll see at the NHS ceremony, uh, which by the way, you're all invited to, June 12th, 7:00 PM. Um, uh, you'll see a, a longer version of this, but basically all the NHS students will have a slide that is playing on the screen during the ceremony that basically just mentions what sort of service that they, that they, that they did throughout the school year. You can see this student, um, volunteered for Karma Cat Rescue Society and also the Highland Park Youth Theater Company. Um, this student volunteers at the Highland Park First Aid Squad. Um, and obviously, as you can see, has amassed a lot of hours of service in that regard. Um, this student volunteers to the Greek Orthodox Youth Association. So again, it could be service opportunities here in Highland Park High School or elsewhere in the community where they can get their serviced hours. So this is a, a little snippet. I know I don't have a video. I'm sorry, but. Um, so one of the things that we celebrated, uh, or acknowledged a few weeks ago, um, that NHS nationwide acknowledges is Student Leadership Week. Um, it was April 22nd to the 26th. Uh, it's an annual celebration dedicated to recognizing and powering the vital role of Americans, young leaders. Um, it's been around for a long time, uh, as you can see on the slide. Um, what we did here at Highland Park High School is, uh, each morning during announcements, we acknowledged one particular NHS student, um, you know, how many hours of service they've done, what service that they've done. Um, and we did that during that, that week. Um, okay, so we just had, um, uh, our, our new roster of NHS students. They had to apply in mid-April. There was a series of steps that they had to achieve during the application process. Um, they needed to provide information about their previous experiences with leadership and service. I didn't really put in a specific amount of hours for this. It's just, you know, what sort of service have you done previous to your application to NHS? Um, they have to provide two teacher recommendations, which I think is a great skill for students to start to learn. The process of, you know, networking with teachers and asking for recommendations. Um, they needed to declare that they had the required GPA. Um, they had to also write a personal statement, uh, short essay essentially. Uh, they had to pick one of the four pillars that we talked about and basically write about what that pillar means to them. Um, and then, so I had all these applications and then I go through the process of kind of sifting through them and, and counting up that, you know, making sure they have all their requirements. Um, and then the way it works is we have an NHS faculty council. Uh, it's a mix of teachers and guidance counselor. And basically I present the list to them, uh, and then they vote on the students that they'll accept into NHS. Uh, this is, uh, per the process of the, the national organization. There's a NHS constitution. And I essentially just follow their, uh, parameters for, for acceptance into NHS. Okay, so as I mentioned, uh, there will be a ceremony coming up soon, which everyone is invited to. Um, 29 total students were accepted. They joined the roster. Well, I guess we conclude next year, it'll be around 50-ish students that are in NHS. Um, as I mentioned, they'll be inducted at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Uh, accepted members are, um, encouraged to bring family and friends. Um, at the ceremony, there's a few different things that happen. We acknowledge the four pillars. I have, uh, four different students give a speech about, a short speech, uh, about each pillar and what it means to them. Uh, we also have a number of students who acknowledge teachers. Um, teachers have played a role in, uh, their educational career. Uh, it's really nice evening where everyone really feels the pride in NHS and also in Highland Park High School. Um, if you are curious about NHS and want to learn more, they have a national website. Um, also the bylaws for our particular chapter of NHS here at Highland Park High School, those bylaws are on the district website. And it kind of just walks you through a lot of what I just said and some more detailed information about how our, our club works. And we did not get to go to California, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. If you've ever been to a National Honor Society induction ceremony, it's absolutely fantastic. Very well done. So I encourage everybody to mark it on your calendars if you're able to attend. Thank you. All right. And my last presentation for tonight, I'm going to invite Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Michelle Rodriguez up, uh, to, um, present on our school performance reports, where every year data is collected to the state on multiple, uh, ways through our state reporting. So the state tests that the students have to take, starting in third grade through 11th grade, um, attendance data. Um, they collect all sorts of NJ Smart data, 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 data. And then they push it out on these reports, um, that are used for every school district around New Jersey. So Ms. Rodriguez, you're up.
Thank you. I don't have students with me or pictures or video and definitely no trip. Um, well, so I'm going to try to juggle everything here. So, um, the state published our performance reports in April on the state website. I'm assuming the presentation's going to be made. No, I, I, I'm gonna try.
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming the presentation's going to be posted, right? So everybody can access. So the link is there if you wanted to go to the New Jersey Department of Ed's website to, uh, find the documents, but we also have them linked onto our district website. There you'll find, uh, the different files are by school in both English and Spanish. And then the last two documents are, uh, the reports, uh, with the district-wide information. As Dr. Susska mentioned, this is some of the information. There are hundreds of data points in these reports. Lots of data information to dig through. This presentation does not show all of it. It shows pieces of it. Um, but there are some of the, uh, uh, big categories. The districts and school overview, demographics, student achievement and growth, graduation, um, climate and environment, et cetera. Okay. Some of the updates for the reports, so there was no testing, no state testing in 2021. Wait, yeah, 2021, in 2020, 2021. So we did not have any accountability process, which I will show, um, later on. Nor did we have any reporting of student growth. So we haven't seen that since the performance reports from 2019. Uh, it has come back now in 2023 because we had testing last year, uh, in 2022 and we had testing in 2023. And we, that's what they needed is, um, at least two years of state testing, consecutive state testing for that. The NJ DOE, um, encourages school districts and all stakeholders to use the data in these reports alongside the data that's collected within the school district. Not just to take this and, um, make lots of conclusions, but also take in, uh, the information, um, at the district level. It also cautions comparing the data from year to year, um, in, uh, relation to the last three years because, uh, of the, uh, impact of the pandemic. So I'm starting off with student enrollment and demographics. This is Irving. You'll notice that there is a, oh my gosh, what did I do? Help. Sorry. Thank you. Um, you will notice that there is an increase in our enrollment. Um, in the last two years, we've had an increase of 57 students. Uh, you will notice the chart at the bottom is student groups and the percentage. You will notice that economically disadvantaged has increased by 17.5%. We've had other small increases, but that one is the most significant when you, um, consider the increase in enrollment. Bardo had an increase in 2022 and it went right back to where it was in 2021. So while it had an increase, the enrollment pretty much went right back. And remember, this is all the information from 2022 and 2023. But again, economically disadvantaged in the last two years saw, um, an increase of about almost 10%. No, 5.7, I'm sorry. Okay. Middle school saw a tiny increase from 21 to 22 and then saw a decline in 23. And, and yet, though there is, uh, a decrease in the enrollment there, economically disadvantaged again saw an increase of about 10%. High school, even, there's just a very small difference of basically in the last two years, five students. So we don't see much movement there. Okay. Student growth overview. So this is the first year since 2019 that we have student growth percentiles. Uh, those are the percents, um, that are assigned to each student based on students in fourth and eighth grade for ELA state assessments and four through seven for mathematics. And it compares, uh, the progress of students who had similar test scores in the past, their academic peers. So the statewide median for student growth percentiles is 50%. Uh, for Bardo, ELA last year was above the state median. And for, yes, for ELA, now the state considers any percent between 40 and 59.5% as having met the standard. So even though we're a little below the median in math, we still met the standard according to the state. So gold star for us. Yes. And so at the, the two graphs at the bottom show, um, the SGP by, um, grade level. And we still are within the, the percentiles for meeting the standard. And so here I just point out some of the student groups where we did meet the target for ELA and math growth. We did meet the percentiles for school-wide, white, Hispanic, English learners for economically disadvantaged. We met the target for ELA only. Asian, native, uh, native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. We exceeded expectations in both. And then for black or African American and two or more races, there is no data for growth because we do not have over 20 students in either one of those groups. So the date, the state does not, um, give you a growth number for that when that happens, when you have less than 20 students. The two graphs at the bottom were to kind of highlight some of the growth that is happening. So it compares the cohort. So if you look at the graph on the left, that is our current fifth graders who took the test last week. So in third grade, so you'll see in third grade, the blue line, 29.5% of the students met or exceeded. But when they became fourth graders, it rose to 47.5%. So that's a big jump. And again, for math, though the jump was not as, uh, big, it still is a little bit of an increase. Same thing for the current sixth graders. That's how they did when they were fourth and fifth graders. Again, you see the same, um, we do see an increase in those percentages. So we're headed in the right directions. For middle school, again, the median is still 50. We did not make it for ELA. Uh, we were very close to the 40 for meeting the standard, but we're not there quite yet. Yet if you look at the graph at the bottom left, we did make it for the eighth graders. Just not exactly there for sixth and seventh. And for math, we did with the 42%. And as you can see, for sixth and seventh grade, um, they were right in between there. Eighth grade is not there because, um, they only do it up to seventh grade because at that point you're talking about algebra and geometry and the different tracks that for, um, for those students. So this just highlights, um, some of the, uh, groups that met the target for math. School-wide, white, Asian, native, Hawaiian or Pacific Islander and students with disability all met the target for math growth. And then again, black or African American, two or more races and English learners. There is no data for gra, uh, growth for them because we don't have more than 20 students. Um, I did the same thing for the charts. So if you see our current seventh graders, that's how they did in fifth and sixth grade. You will notice that it did not increase, um, for neither ELA or math. So we did see, uh, a dip for them, but we did see an increase for our current eighth and ninth graders. And there is no math line there again, because the state doesn't track because once they get past, um, the sixth grade test, the students can be in different, um, taking different assessments. The next couple of slides are for participation rate in the NJ SLA as well as the proficiency rate. This is for Bardo. We're, though it's not large, we are seeing an increase for the school. So for ELA, it's 3.4%, for math, it is 5.8%. For middle school, same thing. ELA, it's 1.3% increase for the whole school and 2.1% in math. Our participation rate is, has been for the last two years, pretty steady, a percent or here and there. Decrease or increase, but it's not a huge jump one way or the other. High school, we saw a 0.5% increase in ELA. But if you notice in last year's proficiency rate for ELA, we were only 2% away from, um, meeting the statewide proficiency. So we were just like right there. And for math, uh, we saw an increase of 2%. You, you will notice that the statewide proficiencies are very different between ELA and math. I just wanted to mention that. Okay. Graduation rates and pathways, uh, the grad, graduation rate. They consider any student who has met all of the requirements to graduate and gets a state-earned diploma by August 31st as, uh, having graduated. Um in terms of pathways for the class of twenty-three, the state waived the state requirements uh for assessments, passing an assessment, a state assessment. So there were no pathways um for the class of twenty-twenty-three. The state did not do that for the class of twenty-twenty-four, sorry. So these are our state graduation uh rates. We did in the last two years uh have rates for four-year higher than the state. And for a five-year rate, we did have higher than the state as well last year. Federal graduation rate is a little different. I just wanted to point that out. Students with disabilities who don't meet all of the graduation requirements because of a modification or an exemption in their IEP are not included in the federal rate. So you won't, there's not much of a difference in our four-year rate, but there is in comparison to the state graduation rate, but there is a little bit of a difference in our five-year rate. These are our PSE, PSAT and SAT performance rates. Uh the students for both, whether reading and writing or math, performed above the state average in all categories. So that was awesome. AP exams, we had a total of three hundred and twenty-seven exams taken by our students, both eleventh and twelfth grade students. Um out of three hundred and twenty-seven exams, uh two hundred and sixty-six of them earned at least a three. So that's about eighty-one percent of those assessments. And um we were above the state average for the percentage of students enrolled in one or more, in one or more tests, took one, I'm sorry, enrolled in one or more courses, took one or more exams, and took one or more exams and scored at least a three. For twenty-twenty-three, we also received the AP School Honor Roll, um the Silver Badge. Sorry. I don't remember all those numbers. So that honor is based on the class of twenty-twenty-four. So fifty percent of the students in that class took at least one AP course, forty-five percent earned at least a three or higher on their exam, and fourteen percent have taken five AP courses or more in their high school career. That's a lot. So that was a great honor. We haven't received that honor since twenty-seventeen. So that was great. Chronic absenteeism. Um this is a chart that shows all of the grade levels for twenty-twenty-three. They consider chronic absenteeism defined as being absent ten or more, ten percent or more of the days enrolled during the school year. It does not matter whether it's excused or not. So that's at least eighteen days. If you look, if you notice on the bar graph, our high school is always under the state average for chronic absenteeism. And we know that their attendance is very important to meeting graduation requirements. We also noticed that our pre-K students are under the state average for chronic absenteeism, but kindergarten through eight is not. So that's a place where we have to do a little work. I will say first grade, fourth grade, and eighth grade seem to be our hotspots where the amount that we're at least ten percent over the state average. So as I had mentioned earlier, um since we had state testing last year, for the last two years, uh New Jersey is now using their, they're back to using their accountability system. And so they're using their formula to determine a summative score. And they use these measures for accountability. So academic achievement, academic progress, graduation, progress toward English language proficiency and chronic absenteeism. And so they use their formula to come up with the summative score. They use our data to give us a score. And then any school that falls below that score for any student group gets identified. Um sorry, it gets identified as comprehensive or as a targeted school of improvement. If you are identified as a school that falls under any of those two categories, then um you basically work with your stakeholders and you assess your needs, look at your data, both from the performance report as well as internal data to uh to identify weaknesses, come up with strategies and resources, how you're going to support those students, create an annual plan, create a timeline, and understand how to get out of that status. We have two schools identified. Our middle school is identified as a comprehensive support and improvement school based on chronically low performing student group. Um that means that the school was previously identified as needing additional targeted support and improvement and has been in that category for three or more consecutive years. The middle school is identified, and the targeted group is black or African American. When you are identified as a comprehensive support and improvement school, you, it will take three years to be eligible to exit. So we won't have an opportunity. It doesn't matter if we meet all of the targets. You're held into that category for three years. So the middle school will only have a possibility of exiting in twenty-twenty-seven. The Bart- Bartle Elementary has been identified as a targeted support and improvement school. And their student group that they were identified for was students with disabilities. But they're in a, I guess for lack of better word, in a lesser category. And they have a possibility of eligibility in twenty-twenty-five, so at the end of next school year. Bartle was last year identified as an additional targeted support and improvement school, which is the category between both of those um for the following student groups, Hispanic, black, or African American, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. However, based on having met the targets for those areas, they are actually exiting additional targeted support and improvement status as of June thirtieth of this year. So only students with disabilities remains. And so they got brought down um to a lower category. They did this, the, the growth uh targets that were met, I mentioned earlier, but I also wanted to mention that for Asian, native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander and two or more races, we did meet the target for ELA and math proficiency in those areas. These, like I mentioned before, the schools are still working to create their action plans. But these are some of the steps um that will be included for Bartle. So professional development around co-teaching models to strengthen instruction in ICR classes, professional development in best practices in special education, data collection and progress monitoring, monthly meetings between CST members and the administration, data wall tracking to identify trends, peer observation and modeling, teacher leader support and coaching, uh a transition plan for students from Irving to Bartle, and then more opportunities for student engagement. And like I said, they are working on more detailed plans. The middle school, as I mentioned previously, they were identified for black or African American, yet noticed that they did meet the target for ELA proficiency in that student group. Now they just need the others for math and growth. Um Asian, native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander and two or more races also met the target for ELA proficiency. Asian, native Amer- native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander, two or more races, and English learners met the target for math proficiency. And the middle school did meet the target for math growth school-wide for white, Asian, native Hawaiian, or Pacific Island.
Oh, you wanna, I just come over into the next Andrew and finish your presentation, I'm sorry.
Yes, I get it. Um, okay. Is this good?
Yes.
Oh, can I take this off?
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah, just, it's not portable.
I don't use these things often. Oh, it's, thank you. Um so, and students with disability met the target for math growth. Some of the middle school next steps, professional development on small group instructions to address the specific needs of students based on data collected, targeted intervention, data collection and progress monitoring, family engagement events, brothers mentoring to increase academic success as well as social skills and peer relationships, continuation of advisory to increase academic and social skill competencies, and recommendations for ship and after-school enrichment opportunities. So district-wide, we are doing um lots of work that we've set some of the groundwork this year, and we're continuing next year. So the curriculum uh will be revised K-12 for both ELA and math since the new twenty-twenty-three New Jersey State Learning Standards um go into effect in September of twenty-twenty-four. So we will be providing professional development on the shifts in instructional practices, especially in thinking about K to five, reading and writing foundational um skills. There will be a continuation in the coaching and support of K to three teachers that we have been doing um in terms of reading readiness, phonemic awareness, and foundational reading skills. We're going to continue um to use benchmark data to track progress and identify necessary interventions and enrichment opportunities. We did a lot of, especially in ELA, we did a lot of this groundwork this year. Um so we hope to improve it and continue to do it. Um continue to work on using common language on assessments and thinking about um items that reflect the NJSLA and NJGPA. Um continue with professional development on data-driven instructional practices in K-12, and then continue to review the multi-tiered support systems to best identify um our different uh varying levels of support for our learners. And here are just some websites, both the state and our school website, um where if you have any feedback or questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So I know that you have uh the wizard scheme to go to as well. So if you need to go, please go. And then uh what I'll do is I'll open the floor to the board for any questions or comments. Um if there's things that can't be addressed today, I'm just gonna write them down and follow back as Ms. Rodriguez has an event to go to. Any questions or comments? From the entire presentation?
Um, I actually have a question about chronic absenteeism. Uh slide twenty-three. Um I know in some of the previous data, it was like we're looking at the, our current seventh graders, how they performed um with the chronic absenteeism data. Are we looking at our current, I guess it, like, was this uh the absenteeism, absenteeism rate for our like current first graders now? Or were now kindergarten?
Yeah, no, it was twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
Yes. So that was like, what you see there was, they're, the next grade is this year.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Um and then, you know, we, we talk a lot about benchmarking and intervention. Um and just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that because I know, for example, at Irving, and we, we've just gone over the budget where we've used operating funds in order to preserve these interventionists. Um can you go over a little bit more about what that means? Like at Bartle where there's, you know, dolphin tutoring, but also um high-impact tutoring? Like, how, how do you get into those?
It's, those are two different things. So, yeah, so we have, so intervention, we offer math and ELA intervention uh in all four schools, but it just looks different depending on the school, whether it's a push-in model or pull-out model and and the foundation for which we, we do that. And then what we do is we offer um benchmarking, especially in our elementary schools uh for all students. So all students get um uh the benchmarking for math and ELA. And if they hit a certain um uh benchmark or recommendation from a teacher, um they do further identification in the actual intervention classes themselves to figure out what differentiated support they need to close those gaps. And then what we do is we monitor that data. And this year, we were very excited because we've been exiting students out. The point of intervention is, it's not supposed to be a life sentence. They go in, they fill the gaps of what they need, and then they get out. So oftentimes what happens is teachers will give an assessment, and they realize, oh, students aren't quite there yet. But are they, how far behind grade level are they? And then that's when they're recommended for intervention. And then the point of intervention is to go back and figure out, okay, what grade level are they operating on? And how do we close those gaps? It becomes a little trickier with math, I think, just because math, it's like, is it operations and algebraic thinking? Is it geometry, right? So those, those buckets. Um and like I said, we've been really excited to focus our energy in that area to, to exit students that are in need. Uh there's usually two schools of thought with intervention. One is trying to hit the students most in need that are significantly behind grade level. Another school of thought is those students that are just at the cusp, slightly behind grade level. Um we've been trying to take, we have a lot of students in need, clearly. So we've, and we don't have enough staff to do that. So we've been trying to earmark the in-school, uh some of the first, some of the intervention for our students that are just slightly below, sort of get them in, get them their strategies, and then get them back into class. And we've been really successful with that. Our students that have been needing um more targeted support, we've been offering a lot more of that high-impact tutoring during the school day so that they can get that a lot of work, especially with um with English Language Arts for like Horton Gillingham and, and things like that. So we've been really trying to target more um specific support for those students. So that's at the K five, oh, yes. Oh, okay. Um and then we have um at the middle school, same type of thing. Our, our students and at the high school, our students are identified usually by their teachers saying, you know, there, there's some concerns about this data, um what, what we're seeing with students in the, in this classroom and um or from the grade level behind. So our fifth-grade teachers might say, hey, we're recommending a couple of kids for intervention the following year. Then uh after the summer, they come into school, and then they take assessments through our programs that we offer, read one-eighty, math one-eighty. And then from there, the program and the intervention teacher target them to say if they need support or not. And then we put them in. It becomes a little bit more challenging, especially at the middle school, not so much at the high school because the high school offers study hall, which students I know love. Uh but the middle school becomes a little bit more challenging because um one, getting the students into those classes means they usually have to give up. And I know we've talked about this world language, um and they don't usually want to. So students typically at the secondary level opt, don't opt in, don't want to participate in our intervention classes, um because unfortunately, they have to give up something. Um what we struggle with is then saying if they actually exit out, then they have to go back into the world language program, and that could be halfway through the year. And they've already missed half of the year of world language. So we're working through some of those kinks. That's a, a secondary scheduling challenge that all school districts face. Um so that's usually how we earmark for the difference between intervention and our high-impact tutoring. All right, go ahead, yeah, Ethan?
Sure, hi, everybody. I don't know if I can turn my video on. I think I can't do it myself. So I'm happy to just be a voice in the room. A voice in the sky. Um, okay, so first of all, I think obviously, you know, just first impression that these are encouraging numbers in a lot of ways. There's a lot of room for improvement, but the ship seems to be moving in the right direction, which is great. And I think the administration and the staff and everyone at the schools um deserves a lot of credit for how hard they're working. Um I also think that these results are kind of particularly impressive given that um uh uh the percentage of low-income students in the schools is increasing at every school. Um I think it's so important that we serve all of our students. I know students with low-income families come in, perhaps less well-prepared. Uh their families may have fewer resources to help them outside of school. Um so I think, given that, you know, we're improving or holding steady as far as, like, as far as I can tell, in pretty much everywhere, um is impressive because it suggests that, you know, we're, we're not um in the aggregate losing ground because we have more students who need perhaps more help. Um so I think that's very good. Um I have two, so two comments slash questions. Um one is that obviously it was great to see our, our AP numbers. My competitive side likes to say that you let, that's, you know, we, we're beating them, being, okay, good. I have two, so two comments slash questions. Um, one is that obviously it was great to see our, our AP numbers. My competitive side likes to say that you let us, you know, we, we're beating them, being, okay, good. And I just wonder sort of, Dr. Sutka, what you think about that finding from the, or that, that sort of, you know, you know, finding whatever. In the context of, we had these earlier conversations in the board about we were not meeting targets for enrollment as I understand it of students underrepresented in social groups in our AP courses. And so I'm just wondering, so how we kind of balance this great, our AP scores look good. But, you know, um, how do we think about that in light of maybe we're not reaching all the students we want to? Although it does seem like many more of our students are taking AP classes than in other districts, which I think is deserves pointing out. So although we may be falling short of some of our own goals that we've set for ourselves, we're clearly doing a lot better on this measure than other districts in the state, basically, as far as I can see. And then my other question has to do with enrollment. I just, given your experience, I was wondering, does the up and down in particular at Bartle and the middle school look like sort of normal churn, right? I mean, 30 students up and down seems like a lot, but I just don't know. Uh, obviously we don't want that to continue. But I don't know if that, if we sort of should not be concerned about it, or if that's something we should sort of really be thinking more about. Thank you.
Okay. So I might need clarification because I'm not really sure what the specific question you were asking for the first, for the first point, but the second point for sure is we can definitely look into it a little bit more, but typically enrollment does fluctuate a little bit. In Highland Park, when our numbers are actually quite low, it's very common. We actually are seeing a spike in a transient population. From what I gather from the borough, about 70% of the homeowners in Highland Park that own homes don't actually live in their homes. They rent them out. And we're seeing a, a very highly transient population, uh, particularly, um, at Bartle and middle school. That's where we see them come in and we're actually taking those, that interesting data and mapping it to these data walls to see if our students where we're having issues with, um, our achievement gaps and with, um, chronic absenteeism and discipline and looking at those students are like, what we're calling, are they our homegrown students that are, were having trouble along the way that once they hit middle school, all of a sudden now we're seeing a decrease in their scores, you know, or upper elementary school, or is it, um, our students that are a transient population? You know, might, might be what we refer to as district impaired that are coming from other districts, not necessarily, um, getting the programming that we're offering, because we do offer really robust programming, especially in math and ELA. For example, you know, our, um, you know, the, the complex tax, task instruction that we offer now is as low as third grade. Department, partial departmentalization and things like that. Um, all of our elementary teachers or a good portion of them are OG trained. So we're really, uh, we focus a lot on that. So we're, we're starting to work on looking at that data because that's been pretty significant on our radar. So it's not alarming in terms of that it happens. What we're can, what we're curious about is if that, um, spike or those changes due to the transient population impacts our data set.
One thing, um, Ethan, just to comment on that as well, and for the group, I was going to ask or just point out that, um, there was a big spike in Irving likely because of the pre-K and that is something we should note. And that's going to follow us next year and the year after. So when we think about staffing, that is a fluctuation that tells us something that I think is actionable.
Okay. Other questions? Monique?
Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, one is on, I don't know if you're thinking about this yet, but I know what it's like to work with a population that is not counting.
Can you just be close to the microphone?
I'm thinking specifically about the fact that, uh, several of our student groups with less than 20 students are not accounted in this accountability data group. Accountability data for growth. Um, and I just think that, and I'm wondering if you all think about ways to kind of create alternative, um, internal measures of assessing. Again, I take with a grain of salt, um, you know, a lot of the emphasis placed on standardized testing, generally speaking, I think that's one measure. I need to really be very clear about the fact that, that yes, we are pleased and happy to see progress at both. We want to address areas of need that are reflected in our standardized test scores. We also realize that is one very narrow measure that really puts all the streets into one, the same hole, right? So we want to be really more comprehensive in how we assess where our students are. So I don't know if you're thinking about that, not just for these underrepresented groups, but just more globally too.
Yeah. So I'll talk, I know that, uh, Ms. Rodriguez mentioned the data walls. And I'm not sure if you've seen them before, especially in some of the evidence that I submitted for my own evaluation, but that's something that I'm most proud of is what we've done in each of the schools is create what we're calling data walls in Google Sheets essentially is tracking all of our students, their, their math and ELA benchmarks, their, um, their demographic information, if they're, um, a student with disabilities, their, um, their socioeconomic status, their discipline data. So number of infractions or number of, so in Bartle, it's infractions, you know, middle school, high school, we get to infractions, ISS, OSS, or rise and OSS. Uh, so disciplinary, and then there are attendance and tardiness. And we're tracking all of those, all of that data and the staff have, have access to see that data. And then what we do during our PLCs and our grade level team meetings and department meetings is look at that data, analyze the data and look for those specific trends. So that way it's easy in sheets to kind of pull, you know, some, some quick reports, some quick graphs and charts to look at that data and look at it saying, okay, let's look at how different subgroups are doing. How are our students that are economically disadvantaged doing? How are students overdoing overall in ELA? So we're actually looking at, even though the state doesn't have us necessarily report, because the numbers of students that, um, that are identified as black in our community are not as significant to report on the state reporting, but we look at every piece of, of that data. So it's something that is helping us in all schools, whether they're targeted or not, to really track a lot of that information, to look at different trends too. For example, if students are chronically absent and they're struggling in class, you know, that makes a little bit of sense, or if other students are coming, there are tend, this is a problem, but there's some issues with student discipline, you know, is that impact? You know, instruction and what's going on and do we need referrals? Is the INS? What, what are we doing? So we're really looking a lot of that data very, very carefully.
Thank you. And then my second and last question, I'm pretty sure, is just, just, I think a question to comment on the PSA, TSAT, um, and AP exam data. I mean, clearly we know that these numbers are, are impressive. I think Highland Park has historically had a pretty high record where this is concerned. But again, this speaks to a very, um, narrow sort of, uh, demographic group in our community. So we know we've been working for a while to try to see more students who are historically underrepresented in more of these classes. Of course, this is all based on individual desire. I want to make sure students want to be there. AP is not the end-all and be-all, and neither is, uh, you know, being in, um, all of the honors classes you could possibly rack up, right? But we really wanted to try to see more diversification in these classes. And I know we're, that's still an area in need of improvements. I think I just want to point out that these numbers are really impressive, but it also, we have to peel back the layers and just recognize that we cannot have certain students kind of riding the coattails of students who tend to be the ones who are predominantly represented in these classes. So it's just still doing that work, still remaining committed to it so that all students who want to be in those classes do have equal opportunity to do so.
Thank you. And I just want to echo that by also just, you know, highlighting back to what Ms. Rodriguez said, like, we're excited about those things, but also we are seeing growth. So I know that, you know, our data has been, you know, really on our radar since my time here since 2016, but I'm really happy to see that we're, we are growing, we're do, we're, we're trending in the right direction and I know we'll continue to do so. But not with, without forgetting that, you know, where we stand on making sure that we are continuing the work on providing high level of curriculum and opportunities for all students.
Um, I have, uh, just two things, uh, and some of this, I don't know that you'll be able to answer right now. First, um, uh, when it, uh, to follow on Monique's comment, um, one of the things just methodologically, um, in the middle school, I think it was, um, Black and African-Americans were targeted for additional support. I was confused by that because we couldn't report on them. I'm sure it's because it's only to the growth, but I, metrics. Um, so I think I know the answer, but it confused me. So it might be something. Yes. Might be, we really have a clarification there. And then the other one, um, I know in the beginning there was a, just a, the overview is this is one input. It's absolutely one input. There's many others. And I think to the extent that we can, um, just, what are those other ones? How are we using them? How does this all come together? So it's great to see this report, but also I'd like to know how we're taking that into consideration with other metrics. What are they? What, what matters to us? What, what are other indicators of success? So just the more we can bring that discussion, uh, public, I think that would be great.
Um, oh, right. Okay. I know Ethan has another question, so I don't, I don't know how to navigate all this. Go ahead.
I, I think I'll lower my hand. I, I may have some more things to say, but yeah, thanks.
Okay. All right. All right. Anne?
Okay. Um, I just wanted to uh, respond to Monique's comment because I take that very seriously. Um, I, I think that one of the things that we do need to recognize though, is when we're talking about AP classes, for example, we're actually doing better than the state average on the percentage of our Hispanic students or this percentage of our black students or the percentage of our economically disadvantaged students who are in AP classes. So we might not be living up to our own standards, but we are doing much better than the state by pretty drastic numbers.
Yeah, that tells us a lot about where our state stands, right?
Yeah, exactly. And, and where our standards are, which I think they should be high. I just really did want to let people, I mean, like the, the difference between here and the state is stark. It's 41% of our economically disadvantaged students are enrolled in one or more AP class. And for the state, it's 21%. So I just.
I just wanted to, um, kind of clarify something also in regard, I, I was going to make the same comment, Sarah, about the pre-K and our percentage of free and reduced lunch students. And we prioritize those students. So it's not surprising that, um, those seats have been filled. So I think what's really, what will be very interesting to watch is as we continue to expand that universe, what happens to that percentage? And another thing to take into consideration, because the numbers do look alarming, is that they also did raise the, um, and you probably know this term better, Anne, um, the limit for free and reduced lunch in September. And then they are also going to raise it again next, this coming September. So that kind of affects our percentages as well.
The, the state law to qualify as economically disadvantaged, uh, that means that you qualify for free or reduced lunch. Uh, there was a law passed in 2022 that went into effect in the fall that raised the eligibility level from, uh, 185% of the federal poverty line to 200%. And then there was another law that was passed earlier this year uh, that's going to go into effect in the fall, that's going to raise the income eligibility to, I believe, 224%. So we're going to see, so next year's report, we're going to see the percentage of economically disadvantaged students skyrocket, which is going to have, maybe not skyrocket, but it's going to go up, but that is because the parameters will have shifted as well, you know, that's a factor to take into account. And then we'll see it again the next year.
All right. That concludes my report.
I'm sorry. I just thought this was one, one quick question. And this is something I know you raised before, but, uh, the discrepancy between math and ELA scores in a, in a few areas, I believe, at every level. But I know that Ms. Rodriguez mentioned that, and I know in the past you've talked about this being, um, something that supervisors across the state are recognized or superintendents are recognizing. So I just wanted you to, I don't know if you want to speak to that now, but what you're, what you all are thinking about as you look at that disparity or discrepancy and have you been able to sort of figure that out a little bit more? Maybe not at this point, but.
All right. Thank you. That's my report.
Hey, we're going to move on to public comment. I don't know how many are online. We have 20 attendees in attendance. Is there anybody here for public comment? All right. Come on in, um, students, you just state your name. You don't have to tell us where you live. Oh, I gestured, I gestured to the wrong.
At the podium, just here. So please, oh, it's.
I have to read, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments.
Um, okay. Wait, can I pick this up? Um, hello Highland Park Board of Education. My name is Anarno and I am a junior at Highland Park High School. I'm going to speak on behalf of students of HPHS with the concern I personally share. Um, this concern regards to the transfer of Ms. Karen Epps from the teen center to Urban. After reading this in the order, in the border agenda, we quickly realized what impact it would have on our students. Personally, I felt really upset and I wanted to know if my friends felt the same way, which they did. Um, we also asked around our friends and they also felt the same way. The general concept was that we couldn't see the teen center without Ms. Epps. Her generosity and kindness shined through me and, and she has really helped me through my very busy and stressful ju- junior year. Also, her support through personal struggles has been nothing but amazing. She is really a great person. I really appreciate her. We asked the board to strongly consider upstanding on this vote so that the superintendent and the school administration can reevaluate the decision. Thank you. Oh, um, I think she's up next. Yeah. Sorry. Okay. Hi, um, my name is Noorani and I'm a sophomore. Um, Ms. Epps, she's not only the secretary of the teen center, but she's also the administrative assistant. So she greets students as they come in, she answers phone calls and she connects with kids and counselors. She acts as a ray of sunshine. Um, every day when we enter the school building, she always has a big smile on her face. If a student seems to be having a bad day, she's always the first one to approach them and figure out what's wrong. A lot of students in this school consider Ms. Epps as a mother figure, me personally as well. Um, when I first came to this school, well, I first came here in eighth grade, but coming into high school, she made me feel welcome and she made sure I didn't feel alone. Um, Ms. Epps, she provided me emotional and moral support and also to other people in this school as well. We as students can count on Ms. Epps to be there when no one else would. Um, yeah. Um, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the rest of my friends and other people in the school as well. They also consider Ms. Epps as a big part of this school and the Owls as a whole. So I really hope you take our speeches into consideration because removing Ms. Epps would be like removing a piece of the Owls and we don't want that. Thank you. Oh, Marlene.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marlene Zuniga Prigum. I'm a junior in high school. And well, when I first, like my freshman year, Ms. Ms. Epps was in like the front, like the front desk when you walk in. She would always greet me with a smile, always ask me, oh, good morning, good afternoon. And like, it's something like, when you first walk in, you know, sometimes you wake up late and you're not in a mood. But it's just like, she always lightens up, lights the day, you know? She always has this happy attitude with anyone. Like Noorani said, if you look upset, or if like you never went to the teen center before, she would encourage you to go and talk to someone if, like you really feel upset or you're going through something. Once again, I want to share an experience like what I have with Ms. Epps. What, like when I first, like when I was going to get my driver's license, I was so scared. I was so nervous and I really like anxious about it. But Ms. Epps would always call me down and tell me, it's going to be okay. If you don't pass, it's okay. You get other chances. And even though it's something not as big to talk about, it's something that I knew that, oh, she's always there to comfort me about it. And she, like leading on to the days of me about to take my test, she did always check up on me. How do you feel? It'll be okay. Just, you know, think it'll be fine. And I did pass and I was super proud, but I always knew that now that I knew she was always there. Like if I needed chit chat about something little, that she always has interest in what I'm about to say. And like, she cares about what I want to say. And it's not like maybe something simple argument with a friend, she's always there to give great advice and how to conquer without like, uh, like an argument, you know, find better ways. And she cares a lot about everybody in school and she's always asking you if you're fine. And, yeah. And I kind of have like social anxiety, but I knew coming up and talking to you guys about this situation was like, I can get my worries over because I know Ms. Epps is something that I really want her to stay. And, um, here we have about like 172 signatures of, of students that wish she could stay as well and some letters. That's it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rory Gibney-Crashin, and I'm gonna read a letter that me and my friend Juliana Cordero Dunn wrote about Ms. Epps. Juliana is not here, but we wrote this together. "We want to share the profound impact that Karen Epps has had on the student body. Over the past year, we have witnessed firsthand the kindness, compassion, empathy Ms. Epps has constantly provided and shown to the students facing challenges upon entering the teen center. High school is a difficult environment to navigate for all students, and the teen center is an incredible program to guide students through it. On several occasions where I have entered the teen center in tears or panic, she is always there immediately to offer a hand and guide me to the support that I need within the teen center. I know many of my friends have had very similar experiences as well. Ms. Epps is the first person you see when you walk into this teen center, and her warm smile immediately causes a warm environment. Everyone knows, everyone who knows her feels supported, seen, and inspired within her presence. Additionally, while many students cut class and have been removed from the teen center, Ms. Epps makes sure that students who reside in the teen center are there for legitimate reasons and removes students who loiter. This subsequently makes it a more spacious and better environment for children that are struggling with mental health. Ms. Epps has greatly impacted the students individually and as a whole, and we deeply value her presence in the high school. And we respectfully ask that you consider our voices as students in support of her. We urge the Board of Education to abstain from, on this agenda item, and we ask that the school administration reevaluates their decision. Thank you for your time."
Hello, my name is Eliana Byer, and I am also talking about Ms. Epps. I started high school during COVID, which set the stage for how hard the next four years would be. I'm a senior right now. I'm not ashamed to say I've had multiple crises during school hours. Not fun. I had a skipping habit during my sophomore year where I would literally leave the school every day, because I didn't feel like there's anywhere safe in the school to go. There, there wasn't anywhere I could turn to. And I was told by all my teachers and administrators, when I brought this up, that the teen center was the place to go. And it was only when Ms. Epps started working that I actually started feeling like that, that it was a safe place to go. Ms. Epps is a familiar face to most of the student body. Most of us saw her in middle school, some of us saw her in Bartle, and we're all seeing her now. She always has something to say, usually with a warm smile and a comforting laugh. And walking into the teen center in tears is a much more common experience than I think most high schoolers would want you to know. And it's, it's a vulnerable experience to walk into somewhere during school hours in tears and hysterics. And Ms. Epps is a constant reminder that no matter what, someone cares about you, someone's there for you, someone understands what you're going through. And she's talked to me and others countless times through moments of really intense emotion that is hard to manage otherwise during school, because there are places that you're expected to be and things are expected to do. She's a blessing to have at the high school, and she forms genuine relationships with the students that not a lot of teachers can do. And she has a special position where she's able to do that. She's really able to reach out to so many different groups of students and people. I think she's most definitely needed for next year too, because it's gonna be a transitional phase for the high school with Mr. Lasseter leaving, new batch of middle schoolers coming in. I'm not gonna be there, but I can tell you that if Ms. Karen, Ms. Epps is there, it will make a huge difference. That's all I have to say.
Thank you all for your comments. Is there anybody else in the room?
I do not know how to follow these young ladies, but I'm gonna do my very, very best. My name is Gina Bridges-Colliton, and I am concerned.
I'm sorry, Gina, can you just be closer to the mic? I'm sorry. Just be closer to the mic. Thank you.
I want to speak about the half a day for Juneteenth. Although I know a lot of people don't believe that this day is very important, but it is. It took us, well, it took basically two and a half years for the enslaved people in Texas to find out that they were free. That's a very, very important subject, because we're talking about freedom. And our freedom is very important, and I take nothing, nothing for granted. And every day, I'm fighting for who I am, my race, every single day. It hasn't changed. So by giving us a half a day of school, it's like you're giving a crumb to the Black people of Highland Park. And it, for me, it's unacceptable, and I have been hurt and felt disrespected. And it has, I've been upset for weeks because I can't figure out what I should do. And I've been told also that if I decide to take that day off, I either have to give a day back to the school system or use a personal day. And I don't think I should have to use either one, because this is truly a federal holiday. So there should be a better solution than just taking Juneteenth and not maybe thinking about another day to make up this day if you have to force no day. But I really believe that you, we need to understand that today, everyone is trying to fight for their rights. And I'm just fighting right now for my right to be able to sit down and reflect upon what it is to be Black in America. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Are there anybody else? Okay, we'll go to online public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Okay, we're going to go on to our committee reports. I'll start with curriculum instruction. For the curriculum instruction agenda, we have the approval of field trips, and we have the approval of home instruction for two students. Curriculum and instruction met on May ninth. We were first joined by Dr. Izat Jarudi and Dr. Pawan Sina, who are the founders of Edify, which we had talked about at the last meeting and tabled. And they answered some questions for us. They described Edify as an AI assistant when it comes to personalized guidance. It's not designed to replace counselors, but to increase efficiency and effectiveness. They just received a grant from the Department of Education, and Highland Park's participation with Edify would be a part of that grant. If we were to approve Edify, the, I'm sorry, the pilot for Edify, the focus for the fall would be something called Discovery, which is a quiz on an app that reveals factors about a student's personality and potential future interests and goals. These questions are engaging and relevant to students. Some questions lightly touch on mental wellness, but it's not a mental health screener. The responses would create a dashboard that guidance counselors could access during meetings with their students, or perhaps before. The idea is to help guidance counselors make meetings more personalized and to build stronger relationships with students. The data would be de-identified and would include quiz responses, the mental wellness questions, and would be stored per industry standard. The pilot would be designed collaboratively with Highland Park's guidance counselors, Ms. Asamoah and the Edify designers. So there's a lot of potential to control aspects of the rollout and design. For example, we can influence the size of the pilot, the process to consent, whether or not students can skip questions, et cetera. So a lot of what we discuss at, with Edify would be setting the parameters for how this pilot rolls out. The next item we discussed was ALP, which is the Advanced Learning Program. Ms. Rodriguez provided us an update from the ALP program. Ms. Tadros is interested in changing the order of some units and topics for next year. But what she is really proud of is that the students are sharing their projects with other students. So some of the Bartle students went to Irving to present to some of the Irving students, and then also some students presented to second grade classes. So they're sharing their work from their enrichment program. Currently, thank you, currently, the enrichment program is for fourth and fifth grades at Bartle. There are some questions about demographics in the program, kind of speaking to what we were talking about before. You know, this idea of, we want to open access to, you know, AP and honors classes, but we want to make sure that this program, this enrichment, is also accessible by many students. We need to determine if the assessments are burdensome in some way, and that's perhaps a deterrent from the program. Reviewing the assessments and knowing that there are state requirements would be helpful, as well as sharing demographics in the program. Communicating the programs with the public might also be an issue, so parents know the options. Now, Ms. Tadros does present on ALP during back-to-school night, but it's during the specials, so don't skip it, because every year we do get a few questions on, "What's ALP? I don't know what it is." And, and Ms. Tadros gives a presentation every year at back-to-school night, so don't skip the specials at Bartle. ALP includes not just that pull-out program. It includes for grades two to five enrichment during specials in four core subjects, also called extra special. So if your kid ever came home and said, "I had extra special today," that is ALP. Grades two and three receive push-in STEM enrichment. Grade fours' pull-out cycle is different ALP, I'm sorry, different ALP cycles. So literacy ambassadors, which focus on fiction, citizen scientists, and art installation therapists. And grades fives' focus are FUSE Studio for Science, literacy ambassadors for informational text, health and wellness experts, and musical historians. And then we touched on music schedules. Ms. Rodriguez provided some information in response to questions and concerns about morning band rehearsals at the middle school. During the school day, band, orchestra, and choir meet as smaller groups. Rehearsals before or after school are when the entire groups come together. Band rehearsals occur in the morning at seven fifteen, while choir and orchestra occur after school. Band also has more rehearsals throughout the year than the orchestra and choir. Enrollment in band is strong. It's fifty-two students, and it's actually grown since Mr. O'Hara took over the program, which is great. These rehearsals are not mandatory. They do have three students that have elected to attend less frequently, less frequently. When scheduling rehearsals, the district has to balance shared staff schedules and students' after-school activities. For example, the middle school band director teaches at Bartle, and the end times are different between Irving and Bartle. So in addition, changing band rehearsals could potentially be an issue for, I think they surveyed the class forty-one out of the fifty-two students who attend rehearsals before school, because they have other after-school commitments. So the question is, are we okay with students attending at seven fifteen in the morning, given that there are no crossing guards, and we have worked towards later start times for adolescents? And it's the earliest start time the district has had for any activity. Ms. Rodriguez will look into possible solutions and indicated that the number of rehearsals for next year, would it be more equitable between the three groups? Another fact, discussion, point of discussion was that the high school schedule half-days is an A-period start time. So there was question as to why that is. This occurs on conference days and prior to breaks. And because you have to work backwards on getting a start time with the schedule, the end time of twelve-thirty on a half-day would give, would, I'm sorry, is like, the time that's allowed on the contract. So nine oh two, to start, like, just regular period one at nine oh two, would be too late. You would not get that four hours in there. So you have to start at the A-period time in order to get the credit for having a day of instruction. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions? Okay, equity and excellence.
I have nothing to report this evening. We are meeting on Thursday.
Finance and facilities.
We are meeting tomorrow, so there's not a report from the committee. Our agenda is approval of travel and related expenses, the approval of contracts, contractors for professional services, one being bringing in a consultant to work with our seniors on the consequences of distracted, distracted drinking and driving. Seems like an important topic. And also the approval of bringing in evaluators to review our school data related to discipline and looking at our RISE program, something that we wanted to do, since it would be somebody who'd come in and start that process. We also have approval of three students for bedside instruction. And then a long list of approvals for participation in coordinated transportation for the Ed Services Commission, and then for lots of other educational services in other counties. And I, my understanding is that this is for trying to find ways to reduce the cost of transportation, combining with other districts to transport some of our, I assume particularly special education students or students who are going to other schools for different reasons. If we could find a way to combine forces, we could maybe save some money on transportation. So that's numbers four through twelve, all related to coordinating transportation. And the last item on the agenda for finance facilities is approval of a structural evaluation. We're looking to have an architect take a look at two different areas in Bartle, the mechanical room and the area adjacent to that, to see what is needed to make that area structurally sound. And that's the agenda. Any questions on that?
I have a quick question. For the presentation on distracted drinking and driving to twelfth-grade students, do you know if that will be a class-wide presentation, or if, like, the individual gym or English classes?
I don't know. We'll have to ask Mr. Lasseter.
Okay, I would advocate for the individual ones, as it's more attention.
Or maybe Ms. Asamoah. If it's, I think it was paid out of the municipal alliance, so we may have to ask Ms. Asamoah about that one. Just want to write that down, so I remember to do that.
Any other questions? Okay, personnel and communications.
Personnel and communications did meet this week. We met on Tuesday night with Dr. Suska, myself, Marilyn, Nikki, and Anne. We went over the agenda items, including appointing Ms. Copola as the new educational stability liaison. She's also, it's very similar to the homeless liaison, which is also Amy currently. And I'll go over the agenda items in a little bit. But in the communications area, we went over talking about surveys and how we could help to improve those potentially in the future. We also talked about some community involvement ideas, like town halls or advisory. And Dr. Suska said she'll look into doing something like that when we get to the point of creating action items for strategic planning. And then the committee suggested also creating maybe some orientation events, either in-person or on Zoom. This is happening already for students moving up to a new school, but the thought was maybe we could do a little bit more for parents, so that they have more of an idea of what to expect at the new school. And then Dr. Suska reached out to all of the school administrators to find out about their parent advisory committees, just to see what they're doing to invite people to it in the beginning of the year and throughout the year. And at all of the schools, it was pretty similar. They do, at Irving and Bartle, Ms. McNally and Ms. Knapp send out invitations at the beginning of the year for initial signups. But then they send out a reminder to families prior to each meeting, either in their newsletter or via email. Anyone can come, though, at any time, even if they didn't sign up at the beginning of the year. At the middle school, Ms. Brady sends out an email at the beginning of the year and puts it in her weekly OWL newsletter. She sends out the meeting dates to all the members and anyone new that expresses interest in attending. They contact Ms. Brady, and she adds them to her list. She currently has ten moms that have been awesome all year. At the high school, Mr. Lasseter also puts out an invitation at the beginning of the year, coinciding with back-to-school night, where he speaks about the committee and the PTSO. He sends him, it's kind of a combined group. He sends invitations to anybody who signs up then, but it's a continual process to invite new parents to join the committee. They meet bimonthly, and it's linked to the PTSO. Okay, and then I'll go over the agenda items. We do have a few read-ins as well. We have board appointments, which is Ms. Copola as the supervisor of educational services to be appointed as the educational stability liaison. Approval of four resignations. Gabriel Saboni at Irving, Ms. Olara, just for the for and after-school program at Irving. A change of end date for Ms. Stidolski. It was May seventeenth, now it'll be May thirty-first, and a. And a, uh, Erica Opitz, paraprofessional at the middle school. Um, approval of a new hire with a correction in salary for Tyler Geisler, um, as a teacher of phys ed at the high school. Approval of leave of absences, one leave of absence. Uh, approval of a non-renewal. A reprove, approval of a non-renewal due to a reduction in force. Approval of, uh, a list of reappointments. Approval of reappointment for a residency specialist, um, Mr. John Rosler. And approval of transfers in the group. But I do want to ask at this point if it's possible to, can we table one of them that the students brought up tonight? Is that possible to table? Or do we have to vote on it and board members will have to make their choice at that time? I'm just asking because there's a whole list of them. So I'm wondering if it's possible to table one or vote individually?
I mean, my recommendation would be to vote on them because we do have a deadline by the HPA contract to be able to do all of these things. That's why tonight is a voting meeting. Usually we have a voting and a workshop meeting. But we do have a contractual obligation to do all of this ahead of May fifteen. That doesn't mean that it can't, something can't be changed later, but we just have to, we have to approve all of these by the deadline.
Since those transfers are all one number though, can you approve? Like, can somebody say yes to all the transfers except one? Just wondering what the options are at that point.
Sure. Okay, but, okay. But just remember what we discussed in the personnel committee about these personnel concerns for budget reasons.
Yep. So the transfers are Ruth Byer from middle school special ed, from Irving Special Ed to middle school. Amanda Marrero from Irving Kindergarten to pre-K. Lizbeth Madine from Irving Pre-K to kindergarten. Alexis Rappaport from Bartle Special Ed Grade Four to Bartle General Ed Grade Four. Christina Parisi from Bartle General, General Ed Grade Two to Irving Pre-K. John McLean from Bartle Links to the Bartle Resource Room for Grade Five. Tanya, uh, Gerlach from Bartle Special Ed to Middle School Special Ed. Jennifer Rosley from Bartle General Ed Grade Four to Grade Two. Rachel Lipstein from Bartle Resource Room Grade Five to In-Class Resource Grade Three. Megan Calabrese from Bartle Resource Grade Two to In-Class Resource Grade Three. Lauren Shobidi, Bartle Resource Room Grade Three to Grades Two, Three. Ms. Leonardo from General Ed Grade Four to Grade Three. Um, Joy Chaney from Bartle ESL and Spanish to Middle School Spanish. Juliana Luxa from English to Special Ed. Ms. Giovinetti from Middle School Spanish to High School Spanish. Uh, Ms. Epps from, um, the Teen Center Administrative Secretary to Irving Administrative Secretary. And Ms. Coppola from Supervisor of Educational Services, ten month to twelve month. And then, oh, and I'm sorry, I did skip one. Number seven was a read-in, uh, reappointment, uh, for a change in salary for Ms. Saka and Ms. Rodriguez. And number ten, approval of staff for Family Night. Ms. Beasas, formerly Ms. Rosley, um, at Bartle, uh, that happened on May nine, May ninth. And number eleven, a new read-in, approval of nurse at Camp Bernie for Bartle, um, will be Karen Kelly. And that's it for personnel and communication. Any questions?
I feel like we wouldn't really be doing the students who spoke to us service. And I, I know we're limited in what we can say, but also just in recognizing kind of their impassioned, um, statement from Ms. Epps.
I mean, if you, if you want, you can add a exec, recess to executive session if you'd like to discuss a person. No, because we didn't, we didn't, my, no, we can't discuss the staff member.
Okay. I have a question. Can we discuss the concept without a person?
We can't discuss, well, we can't discuss the person in public either.
No, of course not.
Well, I think my question is more of, um, if one were to abstain, what the, what the actual, what would that mean for us?
So that would mean that if you abstain, then at the next meeting, you're going to have to vote on somebody for that position. So I'm just, maybe this is how I can explain it. We have a retiree of Ms. Moran leaving as a sec, head secretary. We have a couple of head secretaries that hold that title and that salary within the district. We are very fortunate, and I think that we said during the budget presentation that we don't have to do what a lot of districts are doing, which is riffing and cutting a whole lot of positions. Because we got very lucky this year through attrition, and I know I said that in public, through attrition, we were able to fill positions in-house with our current staff. I will let you know that the teen center is going to be staffed with someone who is fantastic, who adores the kids, who I believe, um, without discussing it too much, was actually highlighted one time in the student rep report as being a warm and welcoming figure in the schools and loving the kids and encouraging them and knowing my name and, and stuff like that. So it's not that the teen center isn't going to have anybody. It's just going to be staffed with a different personnel because Ms. Epps holds a particular title and a salary that warrants that position. So if you vote to abstain from that, then it's, um, one of maybe two or three others would be then can, up for that consideration. So, uh, somebody has to go into that position. Ms. McNally does need a secretary at Irving. So it, it would have to be somebody, so it would be one of, one, two, one of maybe three people.
So what, so what you're saying is if we were to abstain, um, you would be replacing with someone else? The, the, the replacement is not under consider, is not.
Yeah, I have to fill the position. I have to fill it within house because I don't have the budget to go out and post for it. So, um, we did a very careful consideration of how we were going to, to fill that position. Um, and, and based on the consideration that was, um, that's my recommendation. So I could talk more about it in, in a smaller group setting. Um, you can rice the people if you would like to talk in an executive session next time. But just know it's going to be one of somebody. And I will tell you that if it's a decision for another person, hmm, my hunch, based on my knowledge in my head, you're going to have the same thing with some other students coming, trust me. I, because our staff are beloved in these schools and, which I love. They develop relationships. And one of, one of the things I want to highlight, that they said that Ms. Epps has been in three schools with these students, so she knows them. Those are the relationships that all of our staff form with our students. So I think nobody likes change and I know that's very difficult. Um, but if it's, if you're going to vote to abstain, it's going to be somebody else and at next meeting you'll, you'll have it. So you have to vote somebody into that position unfortunately, because I don't have the budget to sustain hiring another person unfortunately.
Yeah, that, that's.
Oh, okay. Oh, go ahead, Ethan.
Yeah, I, I, I think I just wanted to. I, I guess I didn't want to, so that makes sense to me and it made, and, and especially having my memory refreshed of what we talked about in executive session. But maybe you could, um, Dr. Suska, just sort of say that again, but in, uh, a way that would make it really clear to the students who are here, who didn't have the benefit of the executive session, understand what exactly is going on.
So to everybody, to the students and to everybody, we lost, uh, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in state funding. There were decisions to, to, to make within our budget that included, um, uh, a lot of our budget is regulated on legal requirements, whether it's through the HPA, contract negotiations. You could see from the audit, auditors arousing a wonderful presentation that the majority of our budget is personnel and, and benefits. Um, but through the loss of state aid and the fact that we wanted to maintain interventionists and other key personnel, um, and programming for our students, through the attrition process, we aren't rehiring some of the positions. So like I said, through, um, you know, you can see many other districts that are doing, uh, riffs and budget cuts, um, and non-renewals of staff, uh, for their significant, um, uh, loss in, in, in state aid. Are our impacts, our footprint on this is not as significant. So as you see from our board agenda, we don't have very much. And then the ones through the executive session, the ones that I said that we unfortunately had to, uh, figure out, we were able to save and, and move around in other places through attrition. So as people retire and left, we were able to fill that within house. So it doesn't look like we have to go and cut a bunch of things to make our budget balance. So I think that's the concern. I, I hear them loud and clear and let me, and let me tell you, I just, for anybody out there listening, I was the one that, um, moved Ms. Epps into that position when I started because I knew she'd be a great fit because she just connects with those students. Um, and it, it really actually broke my heart. I lost a lot of sleep to have to make the decision. But again, unfortunately, there are a couple of, there's very few staff that hold that title and that salary to have that position. Um, and so, you know, after careful consideration and, and looking at, at the, the impact, um, that was the decision that I made. But I know that she will impact and be a great, um, a great person at Irving. And the person that will fill that position that fit, fits within our budget will also do amazing things and connect with those students. So to let you know and to let the students know the teen center is not going to be without somebody, um, that, that can connect with. I'm very particular, um, for those who don't know, I was the one that even, um, expanded our teen center to our tween center. I believe in mental health and I advocate it first and foremost. Um, you know, Maslow's before blooms, students' needs before anything else, before their educational needs. And so I want to make sure that when I'm making that decision to transfer a person to that position, that I know it's somebody that can fill that need, that will be in the best interest of the students. Uh, so all, all of this was carefully thought out. Um, and I know it's hard to hear that from the students because change is difficult. But please know that the students that are there will be very happy with my decision, I, when that one comes out and know that I, it was with careful consideration.
And just to summarize to you there, I think the, the important thing is what I'm hearing from you and just really, really tightly is either it's a reduction of force or it's, it's approving the transfer, right?
Right. So either I have to cut a staff member or something somewhere else or correct, yep.
That's very important, I think, to, to say clearly.
Thank you for that explanation. All right, policy.
Okay, policy did meet. We talked about, we're still on hold, this is not working.
Okay, okay, I gotta talk into that now. It's always the worst.
We're still holding on the bilingual policy, uh, for more, for more, um, research done by our staff. We had a conversation about the transportation policy. And it's kind of gone through the idea, uh, policy, I don't have it. I don't have it open. Uh, was it eight six six oh? The transportation part. The number? I have it right here. I have it right, I have it right here, sorry. Uh, eight six six oh, transportation by private vehicle. Um, conversation's been back and forth, uh, was checked with administration, uh, who, who agree and feel strongly that teachers, staff members should not be driving students in private cars. Currently, we have a policy that allows that with some, uh, approval from the, uh, administration. So we're working to find a way to, um, so the administrators feel like there will not be a strong impact if we were to, um, either abolish this policy or more likely change the wording so that, um, students cannot be driven, uh, in private cars, driven by staff in private cars. But we're not ready to bring that forward yet. It's, uh, sending it to lawyers for review, to help us with the wording on that. So that's still out there. And the last piece that we discussed was the, um, resolution for law enforcement, uh, the law enforcement unit. Uh, we've also talked to, um, Jonathan Bush, our attorney, to try to figure out, um, how we could potentially, uh, modify that resolution. He, his response was that we follow state law and in all regards, in terms of handing over, um, student records or information. And that's, they, state law is what, uh, trumps everything else. So we're, uh, want to take a look also at the memorandum of understanding with the, uh, police, which is on the state website. Wanted to see if we had anything different with Highland Park Police. Um, we, it was amended a couple of years ago. So I wanted to see, we wanted to take a look at that. Also want this resolution to go to equity and excellence, um, for conversation. So it's still, it's still, uh, in the discussion stages. Um, and then on the agenda, we have one policy for abolishment and that's because it's being replaced by another. That's the equity of educational programs and services. And then for first read, and these have all gone through committee, uh, one on guidance counseling, twenty-four eleven, fifty-five seventy on sportsmanship. Equity, equitable educational opportunity. One on secret societies, which I went back to read because it sounds very strange, but it's really about fraternities and sororities and organizations that, um, are secretive, I guess. Equal access of, but, but fifty-eight, fifty-eight forty-two assures equal access for all student organizations. Um, and the last one is, uh, notification of juvenile offender case, uh, disposition. And those have all gone through committee. So they're up for first read. Second read, we discussed in the past, um, educational equity policies, comprehensive equity plan, equal opportunity equal employment opportunity, equal employment, anti-discrimination practices, equity in school and classroom. And the last one is the, uh, prevention and treatment of, um, concussions and head injuries. Oh, and the one on vandalism as well. Those are all we've discussed in the past. Any questions?
Hi. Yeah, we'll be going back to public comments. Public comment. Okay, um, Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, has reserved this right, this time for your comments. Board policy number zero one six seven establishes and regulates the right of a public to participate in public meetings. How many do we have on Zoom? Okay, if you are on Zoom and would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Okay, we're going to move on to our board action items. For curriculum and instruction, I'd like to move numbers one and two.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes, on one abstain on two.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes. Finance and facilities.
I move, uh, items one through thirteen.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes. Personnel and communication.
I'd like to move items one through eleven.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Uh, yes, on all, but I would like to abstain on the Karen Epps transfer.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes, but I, I just want to add that I heard what the students said. And I, you know, only am voting yes on this based on what Dr. Suska shared. And I feel confident that they will be in good hands in the future. So thank you for sharing that. Yes.
I think Ms. Voorhees spoke for all of us. So, yeah, this is a very, very tough decision and it really is a thing of beauty when, when it's come out like that. So, um, we really appreciate everything that you all said, um, and we, you know, regretfully approve this transfer. Policies.
I move, uh, one through four. I'm sorry, two through four.
Yeah, two. Second.
Yeah, that's what, I wonder about one of the policy committee reports. So yeah, but numbers two through four.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes. All right, um, I don't have a president's report, but I would like to remind everyone that if you can attend one of the graduations, to please let me know which one that you can be at so that we can start talking about who will be speaking for the board. Thank you. Um, the second, the, the next thing, number fourteen is old business. Any old business?
I have a quick question. Um, I just kind of want to clarify a question for the secretary, um, conversation is that you said there was only a few secretaries that could fulfill that position and I didn't see like a new hire for that position in the teen center. Does that mean someone is absorbing the responsibilities?
Correct.
Okay, so they're taking on more, like additional to their.
No, we, there's another batch of staff, uh, that don't have approval of their transfers or their positions until next month and that'll be next month.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question.
New business. Um, new business.
Um, I'd just like to bring something up as we were looking at the school um achievement and performance data. Uh, we did receive a number of emails uh around new academic research that has been reported on the effect of cell phones in schools and especially at the middle school where um we are struggling with student growth um and other issues involving uh behavior and conduct. It sounds like all of the research is pretty much in alignment uh and do believe that it is a additional intervention that the um board and central leadership team should look into.
Thank you for bringing that up. I had forgotten and feel the same.
Yes, this is something that um once we settle down budget season and everything, that we can start to put through committee to examine it and um look at the, you know, impact. And I think um Dr. Suska is also going to be um creating a presentation just about the impact of social media and cellphone use on our district because you can measure it in numbers, so we are going to look at that.
Ethan?
Uh, yeah, that's, that, that was my, my main issue too. Um, you know, I think that um there's an argument uh that I think, you know, perfectly reasonable to make that, you know, uh, you know, students learn to be good digital citizens when they have sort of, you know, regulated access to cell phones and um, and that, that sort of makes sense in theory. Um, that if they have break times, it's, it's a sort of, you know, it's sort of a reward for um uh, you know, not using them in class. In theory, that makes sense, but I think that what the research is showing that in practice um, the, the downsides of having any access to cell phones in school uh far outweighs the possible benefits, which are kind of vanishing and don't actually really appear. Um, and so, you know, I know that we're a very thoughtful board. I know Dr. Suska takes research and data really seriously. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm actually, you know, excited to get, to dig into this issue over the course of the summer and um, and I know we'll come out, we'll come out on a good side. And I really appreciate all the community members who took time to write really thoughtful erudite with footnotes and reference. You know, so, and I want to say, please send us those because I learn things. Um, and I think we all appreciate hearing more from the community on this matter, whatever your opinion happens to be.
I, I would just add to that, yes, I am, am in complete agreement um with everyone except to just add, and I know we are all aware of this, that there are certainly uses for students who have disabilities and use technology um to access their curriculum in different ways. So I just want to acknowledge that, yes, generally.
Yeah, and we have students that use them as communication devices.
Communication devices as well, so there are actual educational needs and uses of technology that we should never um not acknowledge when we're having this conversation. So just the idea of having no benefits of this technology, of cellphone access is, is not actually accurate when you think about our total population.
It will be a complex issue.
For sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we have IEPs.
But still worthy of conversation and, you know, discussion, research.
Okay, anybody else for new business? Okay, then I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.